Okay, my call on March 9th, 2020. Committee of the whole for the Belvedere City Council to order, the clerk will call the roll.
Avrilow.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten President.
Great, full house, nice to see you all. Under public comment, we have a couple of folks that would like to visit with us. Caleb and Erica Simmons, who own the magnificent bakery on Buchanan Street, would you like to come up and visit with us?
I had to take notes, otherwise I'll forget what I'm gonna say.
Me too. If you'd just state your name for the record.
Yeah, so Erica Simmons is my name.
Flora's yours.
Alright, so thank you so much for allowing me to speak, my husband's going to speak here in a second, but, so my name is Erica Simmons, I own Erica Corin Bakery, it's here on Buchanan Street, it's gonna be two years now in April, so I'm pretty excited about that, and we're expanding, so, that's not why I'm here. So, I absolutely love Belvedere, my husband and I have lived here almost five years, and obviously we're pretty invested in our community, starting a business, and so we just wanted to talk a little bit about something that I believe you guys are gonna bring up later tonight, and that is the changes, or bringing up again, the article, I think it's 9812, I'm not sure how you, the sidewalk cafe and street ordinance, basically. So anyway, one thing I wanted to say is, we're not completely opposed to it, we just want to make sure that there's some better language and careful consideration when we're doing this. Obviously, I own a food establishment, and before I was a pastry chef, I was a, like a regular chef, and so I have lots of experience in the food industry. I look really young, I know, so it's hard to believe that there's 10 years under my belt. Anyway, the reason why I want us to be careful about the wording of this is, I wanna make sure that we are serving our community well, it's not just about bringing revenue, but each person in this room, including myself, we are all servants of the people of Belvedere, we don't run Belvedere, we serve Belvedere, we serve the people of Belvedere, so I think it's imperative to make sure that we're serving them correctly. And the reason, or how we would serve them correctly, is by, if we allow this, like ordinance to happen with restaurants and cafes, I think it would bring awesome community to our downtown. However, I think it should be for restaurants and food establishments, not just kind of letting the wording be open to interpretation and allowing businesses to kinda do what they want. And the reason why I'm saying that is because my business is right next to a bar, and we have nothing against bars, obviously, but, you know, I'm there every day, with the exception of maybe like Sundays, and so I see a lot of what goes on, in fact, my husband and I were there the other night till like 3:00 in the morning, let standing in our windows to get the scratches out, and if you're not there every single day, you don't see what goes on and the type of clientele that it brings in, and if we allow, you know, establishments such as, you know, like bars to have sitting outside, this is not family oriented, this is for adults, and it's not serving all of Belvedere, it's just serving adults of Belvedere. Whereas if you were to open up a restaurant or a actual food establishment that offers food, you could serve alcohol, and it would be considered a family environment. We've, I mean, just two weeks ago, there was puke down our sidewalk that they had to hose off, we found a used contraceptive last summer in front of my building, and that's not family-oriented, so I just wanna make sure that we're extra careful when we're wording this. Obviously, we want business to come to Belvedere, our business strives to bring in people outside of the city, and most of our clientele comes from Rockford and the Chicagoland suburbs, and when they come in, we tell them, hey, are you guys gonna get lunch, do you like coffee? And we recommend places in our town to these people, because it's important that we bring outside business into Belvedere, because that's how we make a profit. It's not just serving our community, it's serving other communities too, so that way they can come and wanna spend time down here. But if we create an atmosphere that is, you know, just serving one type of person or one demographic of people, you know, people over 21, then it's not conducive for our community. We had some skateboarders just on Saturday outside of our shop, and if, you know, we have things obstructing, they're not gonna be down there, these kids are gonna grow up into adults, and they're gonna have to find a place to live, right? And I hope they choose Belvedere, and I hope they choose to invest in this community, because it's worth it, but if we just serve a certain type of community or demographic, then we're doing it a big disservice. And so I just want us to consider how we are going about this, like I said, we want, we want people to come down here, we want, you know, growth, I think the city is doing awesome things, and we saw some of it with Strolls, and we want that to continue, we just wanna be very careful that we are inviting the right type of growth, and not just serving one type of client. And I think, let me just make sure, I think that's all I have to say, so thank you so much for listening to me. I know that there's so much when you guys are deciding things, but I just want us to be extra careful, 'cause like I said, we serve people, and we serve specifically our community, that's how my husband and I try to operate our business, and it's not just one person, it's everyone, every age, and if we wanna build something strong, we have to make sure it includes everybody, so thank you.
Alright, my name is Caleb Simmons, and I want to thank the mayor, thank the city council for the opportunity to speak tonight, I appreciate it very much. Like you said, my wife and I own Erica Corin Bakery, and we love living in Belvedere. We're excited about the growth in Belvedere that's been happening the last few years, excited for the changes that are being made to progress Belvedere. I am opposed to the changes regarding sidewalk cafes, just because I believe they will not have net positive impact on our city. I'm not opposed to the restaurant serving alcohol and the sidewalk cafes, but I think the guidelines being suggested are just a little more than vague when it comes to the food being offered, and the wording, the way that's worded isn't very clear. I feel this is a problem, because if we're trying to promote a family-friendly environment, then this will be missing the mark. We've had our location on Buchanan Street, we've been open for two years, but we've had it for about three years, because we were building it up, and I can't speak for everyone, but I've seen lots of families going into the restaurants downtown and being patrons there, but I've never seen a family with minors and kids going into the bars, even though it obviously is legal, but I've never seen families going in and spending time in the bars, and while the parents drink, and I think we'd be missing the mark with that. The current wording, specifically in point number three of the alcohol-serving regulations and the proposed amendment is just confusing to me. It says here, "Alcohol served or consumed within a sidewalk cafe premises shall only be served or consumed in a plastic cup clearly identifying the retail establishment from which the alcohol was purchased, and must offer food." To me, this reads like the alcohol must offer food. I've heard of beer talking before, but I don't think that's what they meant. I would like to see at least this section just reworded to make it a little more clear, and for specifications about the food offering, if that's gonna be included, if it needs to be added to a different bullet point, or however that needs to be handled. But I believe in the future of Belvedere, as all of you do, and I'm excited for the changes that we're making, but if we're gonna make significant changes, I believe we do need to diligently consider the impact these decisions have, and take the time, do it right, and invest in our future. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
This was a very contentious item, the last time we discussed it, and I've given this an awful lot of thought, and we have people who have invested a great deal of money to meet our old restrictions concerning having a beer garden and so forth, they're not really sidewalk cafes, they're beer gardens, and they're not on the sidewalk. I think it's with what's happened on Buchanan Street in the past couple of years, and what we've seen with Stroll, I don't think it would be untoward to word this to where an entity has to actually be a restaurant, and serve at least 50% of their business is in food, to be able to serve liquor in a sidewalk cafe, 'cause I think that does lend itself to families, which is the picture we wanna see. Buchanan Street's come a long way, it's got a ways to go yet, and the reality of that is nobody wants to see a bunch of people coming out of a bar and standing there smoking, you know, 10 people at 6 o'clock in the morning, smoking on the sidewalk. So I think that if we amended this, so that everybody gets a bite of the apple, but just for people that serve, that don't serve food, for people just have an opportunity to sit on the sidewalk and purely drink, I think that that creates kind of an issue. Yes?
I thought about this a long time too, I think you should go a little farther, because I always look at downtown Arlington Heights how it is, but Arlington Heights, they can't have any bars. There's not one bar in Arlington Heights, used to be, but now it's restaurants can serve You need to make it in there if you're gonna change that ordinance, that there's bars down there that you can bring food into, but they shouldn't be counted that way. It should be a bar that has its own kitchen that serves, not you can bring it in from anywhere, because they still won't draw a families, you know what I mean?
Well, there was some conversation with the short line and the firebox, that they've already made the offer to all of the bars, that they, people in the bars can order food, but I would agree, that, you know, that can't count as, it's okay to order food sitting at a table outside and just primarily drinking alcohol at the bar.
Right, because you're not gonna, you're not gonna get that family setting there at that type of thing. I think they should have a restaurant, and then you can have your cafe. If you're gonna serve alcohol, you need the kitchen part in that establishment.
Alderman Freeman.
So we've mostly all been focused on Buchanan Street, because we all know the width of the sidewalk, and that that's the most feasible place, but my question is for Gina, is there other places, other streets or areas downtown that would actually be able to accommodate a sidewalk cafe, or are we pretty much only talking about Buchanan Street?
There are other locations, Buchanan Street is the largest, but years ago, when Adam Kagan was still here, and the city first allowed sidewalk cafes without alcohol, we actually drew up, created a, like a 12-page handout that talked about the kind of furniture that was allowed, how it had to be secured so it wouldn't blow around, and also a map of every block downtown that said, in this area, this is where your sidewalk cafes can be, and in this area, this is where they have to be, 'cause you always have to maintain a four-foot wide clear path for ADA compliance. So there is, there is a handout in my office, I didn't think to bring it, but yeah, it is primarily Buchanan Street, and closer to the intersections where the right-of-way, or the sidewalk kinda widens, but there are a couple other locations that can go.
O'Brien-Dobbins, for instance, once would put tables out there, so their coffee shop could serve, you know, coffee, and I think there are some opportunities to rework those things together. Yes?
The food addition, as I mentioned when this first came out to the council, this was the ordinance that was introduced several years ago. The addition of the food requirements made by the council, I think actually committee at some point during those discussions, which is part of the reasons for the weird grammar with it, the section requires the establishment to offer the food, so they couldn't bring in food from someplace else and do it. But where the real vagueness lies in what kind of food, are we talking peanuts, are we talking frozen pizzas, are we talking a full kitchen? I think I made that comment before, 'cause that's really up in the air. That was purposely left that way before, for two reasons. One, there was discussion, both on this ordinance as well as another ordinance, I'll allow the mayor's comment of 50 or 51% food versus alcohol to qualify. One of the discussions that was had back then is, okay, who's gonna check the receipts? How are you gonna know? It's really easy to just look and say, okay, they've got a full kitchen, they're serving food, they're probably okay, but we really don't have people going out there receiving the receipts and checking these kinds of things. As to the full kitchen, I'm not sure what a full kitchen entails, because you had the brick, that was a restaurant, they didn't have a hood, they didn't have a grill, they worked with electric skillets and crock pots and things like that. So if you're going to limit it to more of a full-service type of a restaurant, where the focus is on food, or at least as much on food as in alcohol, I would go the 51% ratio requirement, realizing that about the only time it's probably gonna be checked is if somebody thinks there's a problem, because it's gonna be awful hard to check that on an annualized basis.
Well, a restaurant is gonna have to serve at least two meals a day, with a comprehensive menu, a lunch and a dinner menu, and, you know, I agree that we're not gonna go around and check their receipts to make sure, but it'll become pretty evident pretty quick who's using it for what. And the hours are another thing, you know, sidewalk cafes need to close up, you know, earlier than 2:00 AM in the morning, because at 2:00 AM in the morning, restaurants are typically closed, and if they're open, it's people that are just drinking, and they can go back inside to do that, so, you know, I think it has to be something reasonable. We already have a set of stipulations as to the areas being fenced off, and where they can be, and I think we need to incorporate the handbook with those things in it, and the other things that were in the ordinance before, and come back with something that incorporates all the things we talked about tonight, so it's a compromise for everybody.
And I'd remind the council, as well as you, Mr. Mayor, that this addition is actually part of the sidewalk cafe ordinance, so all the rules and regulations that govern sidewalk cafes in general apply to this, so for example, they can't be open after 8:00 PM, they're required to close by 8:00, so things like that, the hours of operation, things that are already in there.
Is, I mean, in summer nights, it's late until, you know, 9:00.
We had that discussion too, with we expect a beer gardens, how late do we really want them open? The sidewalk cafe since previous go-around was at 8:00 o'clock.
I think that's a little early, I think 9:00 o'clock's more reasonable, what do y'all think? 9:00, show of hands, 9:00? Mr. Burton, you wanted us to revisit this, so do you have some viewpoints you would like to share with us?
Well, I liked the discussion so far, I just, I'm in favor of more regulation, I could go with the kitchen proposal, I just didn't want a free-for-all.
No, you're right.
Would the council or committee, I should say, would prefer the 51, 50 or 51% food receipts versus, because again, the kitchen, I have a hard time, what qualifies as a kitchen. I mean, to me, it's not a couple microwaves and a, and a skillet or something like that, but quite frankly, that's the way the brick used to operate, and even sips and sprinkles now, you can go in there and get loose meat sandwiches and all kinds of food, but they do not have a full kitchen, so I don't know how you define that, might be easier with the food versus alcohol ratio.
Well, sips and sprinkles doesn't sell alcohol, do they?
No, I'm using them as an example, a place that could do food with.
I didn't know you'd get a, a beer, you know.
Let's not give us the idea. Okay. A beer mall.
What's your pleasure, council? 51%? Show a hand. Okay, so are your instructions, council, to send us back to re-crafting city attorney, and have it ready for us to look at next week?
I can have the amendments ready for the council to consider, outline and strike out forms, they can just adopt them at council next week if they want.
That'd be good for everybody? Okay.
Wait, wait.
You good with that? Okay. Yes, Wendy?
Yes, I was gone the time that you talked about sidewalk cafes, so there's a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about. It says it would open at 7:00 AM.
Currently sidewalk cafes may, currently, as they said now, sidewalk cafes can open at 7:00, are required to close at 8:00.
Okay, are we gonna tweak any of this stuff?
Well, 9:00 for closing at night.
Okay, okay, and then there was also a part where they said it had to be, let's see, a responsible individual over the age of 18 at all times, and then somewhere else I read that it was 15, is that gonna be in there too as well?
I'm not sure we saw the 15.
Sidewalk cafes shall be manned by a minimum of one responsible individual over the age of 18.
Correct.
Well, then there was another one that said 15, so I don't know what the correct age is.
It's 18, I don't know where the 15's at.
They get your server, you have to get a server's license to serve alcohol.
Well, first of all, nobody can serve the alcohol without having passed the basic training and be of appropriate age. Because keep in mind that we're talking about two different things they can do there.
If a restaurant isn't serving alcohol, they can have a server who is.
15 or 16.
No, I'm just asking for discussion, because I was not here.
Okay.
They're probably right about the, remember, this is, this part doesn't address the alcohol, this is just, and the hours would probably facilitate O'Brien and Dobbins or some other coffee shop having outdoor stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see anybody that's serving, we don't have anybody that serves breakfast restaurant downtown, right now, but, and I don't think people are coming to a sidewalk cafe for breakfast. I think coffee shops might. And the bakery, a bakery might decide to, you know, do rolls and coffee or something. So, any other changes we wanna look at? Yes, Mike?
Is there smoking allowed in the confined area where the?
That's a good question, because it's outside.
This does not address that, that'd be governed by the Smoke Free Illinois Act. To give you the exact answer, I'd wanna go back and look at the act, my recollection is if they are more than 15 feet away from a entrance to the enclosed facility, they probably could, but I'd have to check that.
Because Sandy doesn't allow them, does she allow them to smoke in her enclosure, in her beer garden? Does she? And I wonder why people are standing out here at 6:00 in the morning, smoking, waiting for the bar to open?
Probably.
Okay, I just, I see that often, I just don't get it. Yes?
And I know that the 15-foot rule, it says doors and windows, one of the things I noticed back in the day when that came up with the potential for smoking outside on Buchanan Street, is you have living spaces up above with windows, is the 15 feet, you know, from pivot line, or is it 15 feet, you know, in that encompass? Because if you're living upstairs, and you got your window open, you got smokers downstairs, they're not gonna be a happy camper with that prospect, potentially. Just tossing that out there for enforcement issues, I don't live it, so I'm not that concerned about it.
Good question, I just don't think that's gonna be a problem, but it could be, I suppose.
And just.
If you got nine people smoking under somebody's open window, I suppose.
And the council prepares a vote on this next week, if it goes forward at that point. I'd just remind you that the only changes to the existing ordinance are in subsection N, and it's only on the last page of this entire document, the rest of it is existing code, it's in there for your clarification purposes, and to make sure that our confiscation company doesn't make a mistake when they insert this into our electronic codebook. But the only changes, they were shown in highlight, they're shown in underline in the original draft, you got it last committee, but it's subsection N, and it's only on the last page.
Alderman Snow.
And so when it does come to the restaurants, I'm not at all familiar with what the, who the health department governs, I don't, do they govern bars in general, or do they cover, in this case, sandwich shops, they obviously cover that, so I didn't know if that's a stipulation that's something that would govern the food portion, that, you know, it has to be something that the health department would actually monitor, as far as enforcement of.
They already do, they're responsible for all restaurants and things like that in city of Belvedere.
Are they responsible for bars?
Well, if they serve food, or, yeah.
Yeah. Any place that serves food, you have to, if you're gonna serve liquor, you have to have one kind of training, if you're gonna serve food and liquor, you have to have two kinds of training.
The health department's responsible for bars too, they have to check the three-compartment sinks, things like the nut coolers, temperatures, and stuff like that.
Anybody else? Well, we'll send that back to the attorney's office, and he'll bring it forward next week. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, on your desk tonight was a handout about the wall that heals. I need 25 volunteers, 25 to 30 on that Tuesday to help put the wall up, and then with the group that shows up to put the wall up.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, excuse me, it gets here Tuesday night, I guess, Wednesday, and then we'll ask those volunteers, those of them who would like to help, for taking it down on Sunday. Everybody's looking for volunteers, so hopefully we're gonna end up with 50, 60 volunteers on a list, and so we can work in shifts. But it was my intention that the fire department will help until they get a call, and the police department guys will help until they get a call, and we'll probably get some volunteers that are off-duty that will come and help, so I need names and contact numbers, because this is coming up sooner than we think, so if you can spend a little time to help with this, it would be great, and I'd like to be able to, by this time next week, have a list from who's interested in this room, and be a volunteer that I can share with Emily, who's putting this together. Yes?
What time on Wednesday are we starting?
Wasn't there the timesheet with us too? Yeah, isn't there, there's a timesheet that came with this. I don't have one of those in front of me, so I can't quote that for memory.
Send something around.
Yeah, you could send something around, it's a good idea, Wendy, thank you. Okay, next up, Ida Public Library is here to make a presentation with their new director, Lou, and group wanna bring up your folks? Are you gonna do it all by yourself? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everyone, good evening, my name is Lou Carlisle, I wanted to have the opportunity to introduce myself. I'm the new director at the Ida Public Library, been there for about a month now, I've been overwhelmed by the warm reception, by the people of Belvedere, the city officials, and some of you I've had the opportunity to meet already, some of you I'm actually looking forward to getting to know you better. I also wanted to extend a special invitation from the board of trustees, this Saturday, we're actually having an open house on Saturday from 1:00 to 2:00, it might be a wonderful opportunity to meet the staff, we're gonna have just about everyone there, we're gonna have tours of the library, and if you don't have one, you can get a library card, so something to look forward to if you're available. I actually watched the videos in December about the libraries, the librarians coming here telling the city council about, you know, the issues that the library is having, when we're looking at our budgeting issue. Actually, I wanted to applaud my staff's efforts, it actually showed a dedication, how often do you see a dedication to, you know, one's library to come here and actually fight for the library, and actually dedication is, you know, for the community as well, because they actually want what's best for the community, so I applaud their efforts. And watching the video, actually I heard the questions offered by the council as well, I actually thanked the council as well for your questions, it actually showed your toughness on your part. There was a dialogue, something I think that has been missing in the past, you know, at the start, I think it's something we have to have, it's a continuous dialogue, and I will say, the library is partially guilty about this. You know, past few years, there have been some budgeting issues, as well as personnel issues, so the library hasn't always, you know, showcased itself to the community and to the council about what we do. So I heard the questions, you know, several times from the council, what does, what does the library do? Actually, that's a bit of a dangerous question for a librarian, asking a librarian what the library does is like asking a proud grandparent, how's the grandkids? I can give you a much longer answer than anticipated. So just wanted to say I did a little bit of, you know, cheating, I took about $25,000 of residents, I looked at what we received from the levy, I, you know, know that everyone doesn't, you know, pay taxes, it's by household, but it actually does break down to like $28 a person, you know, for that $28 investment, you actually get a variety of entertainment in all forms, you get access to research, you get access to, you know, hobbies, and just anything you wanna learn about. Programming. Programming as well, historical program, how-to program. We offer program, and we welcome program, maybe some government agency or some organization might want to do a program, we welcome them as well. So for this twenty-eight dollar investment, it seems pretty cheap. You can't get one book at the bookstore for, you know, twenty-eight dollars. And this is something actually you might not know, is another question that came up about how do we use our library card? Actually, did you know you have access, with your Ida Public Library card, have access to a hundred and twenty-five libraries? We're actually part of a Purricat Consortium. The Purricat Consortium is in Northern Illinois, and it's a hundred and twenty-five libraries. With this, we offer reciprocal borrowing. If you go to another library, your card is good there, you're already in the system. And if we don't have the item, we'll get through in a library loan. We'll find it, we'll have it sent to the library, you don't have to do any work on that part. And even if you're outside of our Purricat, your card can still be good. If you're at the Illinois library and you just happen to be there for any length of time, you can actually register your library card at another library. It's a little bit more of a process, but you can actually use the facilities having a library card in the state of Illinois. So that might be a benefit that can serve people who might be spending some time elsewhere. Pardon me. And it has been brought up that we actually are the only library in Boone County. So with that, we actually do serve the people of Belvidere, but we don't restrict on our programming. We actually welcome people to come in, come programming, or just to use the library in general. How often you actually get the opportunity to come into an establishment with no expectation to pay anything? You come to the library, enjoy yourself, stay there for a while, use the books, read the magazines, it's not a bad deal. And we actually do have some goals. It's been brought up about, you know, working with other entities, other departmental groups in the Boone County government. And we actually are trying to do that. For example, you know, veterans. The last board meeting, we actually had some public comment. A person who is an advocate for veterans actually was coming to advocate for a disabled veteran. This individual was a hundred percent disabled by his service. He's also on a fixed income. One problem is, due to his fixed income, he was, you know, outside of the city limits. Well, normally, he would actually have to pay something for his, you know, library card. Well, the board actually listened to this individual's, you know, speech and were actually working on trying to help this individual. The library actually wants to be there for, you know, veterans, people who served, and so that's one group we wanted to reach out to. Boone County Council of Aging. We were asked by the Boone County Council of Aging to do memory kits for individuals who're suffering from Alzheimer's type symptoms. So something our expertise, try to find kits on a variety of topics just to, you know, rouse the individual. And so we're proud to, you know, work with them on, you know, that project, children's programming, after-school program. It's, public libraries are a wonderful place for the kids to come after school. We offer entertaining projects, we offer educational projects, we have, you know, STEM projects which help, you know, promote the sciences. So we do play an educational role as well. Century Storytime. Century Storytime is like for individuals with special needs who might have issues in a normal environment. Like example, some people with autism, you know, loud noises, or, you know, certain feels. So we offer a storytime that's actually tailored to help that segment of the population. So we actually do try to reach out to many different segments of the, you know, population. And so I wanted to do a little, you know, bit of discussion about what the library offers, and everyone is thinking the money. I was getting around to the money, but since this is sort of our first date, I just wanted to, you know, ease into it and never scare you all away. So the problem is, you know, the budget. It's been brought up through December meetings that the levy is the library's main source of income. We don't have the ability to raise other sources of income, so we are very dependent on the city for this. And some issues that the library has had in the past few years, which everyone who owns a business knows, about the minimum wage process, it's going up. And with what we have been getting, it's kind of hard to, you know, maintain and offer a competitive wage for this. So we actually have been trying to be proactive. We don't, the library doesn't want to just go, hey, we need more money. We're trying to be more proactive with this. So one of the things that we've already done, we've actually worked on redesigning our organizational charge to try to, you know, cut out some duplication and waste. We've got some ways to go, but, you know, it's a start. We did listen to what concerns the council, and I appreciate that. But to be honest, the library is a little bit in survival mode, so it is kind of hard to maintain an open dialogue when we have a building that was actually, the main part of the building is, was actually built in nineteen twelve, so we have a hundred-year-old building. The problem with that is, anyone who has some of those beautiful older homes in Belvidere knows there's a lot of maintenance, and the library is no exception. So building maintenance, it was brought up in December, you know, we had to replace air conditioning units and other things. This wasn't in our budget, so we had to pull it from our reserves. You can only do that so long, pull money from your reserves. Actually, what I would like to do is have the library, what a lot of libraries do is have a building maintenance fund where we actually put money, because we know that in five years, we had to replace X amount of air conditioning units. Unfortunately, just trying to, you know, pay the bills, we can't actually put, you know, money aside for that due to responsible thing. So that is an issue. We're struggling to pay competitive wages. While everyone is very dedicated, yeah, everyone deserves a fair wage. The library has suffered from trying to maintain quality individuals, based on education. To say, you know, in the state of Illinois, a lot of times, to be a regular librarian, they actually would like you to have a master's degree. And so with the budgeting of the library, I know we have to limit how many, you know, regular librarians we have to have the master's degree level, but it's kind of hard to, you know, draw individuals in with that educational requirement with what we can pay. And so I salute the staff who have learned a lot on the job to, you know, meet their qualifications for the, for the public. So actually, what I am looking for, I'm looking for help from the city, not just in the form of money. I'm looking for the help in the form of a dialogue, and I think we had that beginning in December. I welcome, you know, your questions, I welcome you to learn what the library does and how we can improve. I apologize, Becky, I'm putting you on the spot. I was at the pre-audit, pre-audit meeting with Sikkage, and, you know, we're just, you know, some casual conversation, and we were talking about, you know, the building, the stairs are crumbling, and, you know, we were saying how we haven't been able to get a lot of funding due to grants. And I was, we were talking with Becky, and she actually had some wonderful advice about perhaps you can, you know, go to some other government organizations or some of your representatives to have a fund for this. It's something that we hadn't considered, but if we actually had, wasn't having that conversation, we might not have had that idea, so I appreciate the idea. Yes, for the library, our population of around twenty-five thousand, we do, we need financial help to be funded. The state of Illinois has a book called Serving Our Public. Serving Our Public is the guidelines for Illinois libraries about what kind of operating hours we have, how big our collection should be, how many staff members we should have. And so based on the guidelines by the state of Illinois, we are struggling to maintain, you know, the standards. Some of them were at the minimum, minimal level that, you know, they recommend. So a public library can be a source of pride for, you know, community, because it does so much. And so I actually invite all of you to, you know, think of different ways, you know, to help the library, another, you know, branch of this government, of Ida, of Ida Public Library, another branch of Belvidere. So what it, you know, boils down to what type of library the city wants, what type of library the city wants. Yeah, we can make the budget work, but it will entail, which we said in December, you know, some cuts. And we don't want to do that. We want to try to stretch the dollars as much as possible, but we can only stretch it so far. So for the investment offered, I hope the city and the council can see what the library has to offer a community. It's a, you know, great investment that pays huge dividends. I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to discuss. Yes, ma'am.
So I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Carlisle. There was some discussion about, you know, maybe getting you guys a little bit bigger slice of the pie, which I think would have to be done as a referendum. Have you guys discussed that? Are you moving forward with that in any way?
Well, yeah, we are, you know, looking at just how it works with, I use a term, it's a little bit different, but like for, you know, district libraries, you know, compared to other libraries, yeah, we are getting a lower, lower percentage of the pie, as you put it. We actually would consider doing a referendum, but as everyone knows, it can be a bit of a lengthy process, and we do need the support of the council for such a thing, and that's why I'm actually coming to all of you, because I actually want all of your input. I want you to, you know, be a part of this, because we're all serving the community. So, yes, I actually would love to discuss the possibility of doing that.
Thank you.
We could, and I've spoke to Amanda about this in the city attorney. It's a little bit different because we're home rule. So their percentage really doesn't matter anymore, just like for us, because we're home rule, we don't have to follow. I mean, there's still a certain percentage, but it's, it's different with home rule. They can, they can come and ask to levy more rather than a percentage.
Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So, but like, rather than have to raise property taxes, we could just slice a little bit off the park district slice, and no?
They're completely separate. They have their own levy, school district has their own levy, the county has their own levy, everybody has their own levy, and they are all under tax caps. The city is not under tax caps because of our population.
But we adhere to tax caps out of preference to not have to raise property taxes. I don't think that really got through the last couple of years. We could ask as much as we want, and we don't. We stay with tax caps like the other taxing bodies, and so we are already on a budget opposed to what we could ask for, for money to run the city and help the library. So we are already very aware of what the tax situation is with our citizens, and we're trying to keep it as economical as possible. Yes?
There's really only three ways to increase their funding, short of bake sales and things like that. One would be for the council to actually prove increases in their levy, which of course does increase property taxes. A second would be to find other funds within our budget to utilize for library purposes, and of course, we could transfer those to the library as well, but that would mean cutting part of the pilot fees for our own departments or raising taxes. And the third mechanism, which might be more the right you were thinking, is if they became an independent library district, in which case they'd levy their own taxes. However, if they do that, then they become subject to tax caps because they would not be, there is no such case as home rule library districts, so.
I think we need to be very circumspect about the whole home rule thing, because if we don't get a good census, we may lose our home rule, and which will cost us millions of dollars from the state, and subject to more unfunded mandates. Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So the other question I had for you, I, I think I talked to one of your staff members before about a way for you guys to maybe cut some costs is maybe to utilize volunteers. I know a lot of retired school teachers would maybe be interested in doing the storytimes and, and just volunteer down there so that you might be able to save some money that way?
We would entertain the possibility of utilizing volunteers, but as each, any individual who's had volunteers in the workforce, you know, volunteers do some specific things. There are duties that, you know, volunteers might not be equipped or unwilling to do. So absolutely, we would love to utilize more volunteers, but for some of the core services we have, we would, we do require, you know, trained staff. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody else? Alderman Burt.
Yeah, I don't know how far out this is, and I know it wouldn't happen overnight, but I was just wondering, is there any way, like, the library could be like a city-county thing, like the PSB?
I believe, like, you were talking about it would be a library district, and the library district would be us having to become our own entity, and we would have to start, like, annexing other areas, and so we would actually have to find, you know, cooperation with other groups as well to become a library district. And it actually, a whole new set of rules with our library district, like one thing with the library trustees and some ways we do our budgeting. We would be on our own a little bit as well, and, you know, we appreciate the guidance and help that the city does offer, you know, times like with payroll and with utilities. Yeah, we would be considered our own governmental entity. And while we might be able to draw more in, it would be a lengthy process.
Higher cost for their operations significantly.
And to answer your question, I don't know if the county's code allows, I imagine it does, but I've never looked at it, allows a county to have a library similar to the library's code allows the municipality to have a library. The library is its own separate entity. Our library is not a city department like Public Works is. Their board, however, is appointed by the city, and the only way they can levy taxes is if the city levies the tax for them. But they can own property in their own name, they can take all their own actions, employ their own employees, we have absolutely no control over those kinds of things. So from that perspective, they're a completely separate entity. Townships can also have libraries. It becomes a township library, township library district, where the township does levy and does the funding on them. If the county's code has provisions similar to that, and I don't know the answer to that question, then there would be nothing to prevent the city and the county from cooperating with respect to a library through the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act as well as the 1970 Constitution. That, as you know, can be time-consuming, would take a lot of discussions between us and the county, because that would require them then to levy funds for that intergovernmental library, for lack of a better word.
A couple of things have occurred to me as we've done this. You know, a lot of organizations who have funding challenges do pretty elaborate fundraisers, and I'm thinking something like a night at the library costume kind of thing where you get sponsors and so forth, and make it an event, get the Main Street players involved with it. Just use your imagination, and, you know, people will line up to be a sponsor, and you set sponsorships at fairly robust levels. I've seen that done. Not with a library like our library, but it's a cool library, you could do that, because you've got an upstairs and a downstairs, and, just a thought. I think you have to do what you have to do to try to figure out how to meet your budget needs. If you look at our Museum of History, you know, they had fundraisers, 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 and then they got to be equipment to put on their edition and increase the, the level of what they're able to do in the community. So I think you're doing all the right things. I think we just, you know, all need to work together and try to figure it out. The money that goes around, you know, when you look at, the school districts obviously get the largest piece of the pie. And then the city, the county, and the park district gets a big share of, and so, you know, I think we have to look at ways, and it's not easy to rearrange what everybody gets. I mean, it's, it's just the way it is. The legal ramifications and the process and the timeframes of doing all those kinds of things is very challenging, and everybody's lawyers get involved, so it takes twice as long. We appreciate your comments tonight, and we certainly, you certainly have our support as you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that.
And it's, it's nice to see you again.
Thank you, you as well, and thank you all, I look forward to getting on.
Alderman Snell.
Couple of things. It is interesting, he had mentioned about the, what really amounts to as an unfunded mandate of the minimum wage irking up continuously, and then you have the problem of people that are on new entry level per se wind up at the same pay level that somebody that's been there for ten years or more because of all this transition. The other is impact fees. Are they included? Do they get any pie of impact fees, and could they, and what the scoop is there?
It depends which subdivision it is, depends how the agreement was written. I think a majority of the subdivisions, I want to say it's eighty. I think a majority of the subdivisions, I want to say it's $80 of the impact fee goes to the library.
The, all the modern taxation agreements that we've done have library impact fees, and any future ones would as well, unless it's waived by the council, but we're not doing many taxation right now, and they're not allowing houses to be built, so that's not a real good source of revenue.
Well, good news about that. We've got somebody coming to talk to us Thursday afternoon about building some houses out there on Beaver Creek Road, Beaver Valley Road, so maybe there'll be a little money in that for the library.
Hopefully, it'll be good, yeah, probably in general, wonderful. Thank you all for your time, I do appreciate, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We do not have building, planning, and zoning items tonight, unfinished business, or new business, or Public Works unfinished business. Under Public Works, new business, we have several items. Director Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First up is our TRC proposal for landfill number two annual services, including your packet was a copy of the proposal. This is for the annual work that's required to do for EPA compliance at our landfill number two. It's on, our maintenance out there is shared between the city and county on a 50/50 basis. I would recommend approval of the proposal from TRC in the amount of $40,100 for the 2020 landfill number two annual services. This work is included in the proposed landfill budget, which is account number 015-335-7900.
I have a motion of that effect. Motion by Alderman Snell, second please. Second by Alderman Porter. Questions or comments? Alderman Snell.
And while you did touch on it at the very beginning, but the $40,000 is just, we're paying half of that, the county's paying the other half, is that correct?
That's correct. $40,000 is their estimate, and it's on a 50/50 basis.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all is in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, did I have a question? I'm sorry. Alderman Reblow.
I just had a question about the technical service support. What are we getting for $7,000?
So, the technical service support, as issues come up in between the reports and the annual services due, they throw that number in there to cover questions, concerns, issues raised. Typically, it'd be responses back to the reporting through the IPA. They'll request clarification, additional information, and so forth, so that's the number that they put in the proposal each year to cover those instances.
And more?
Yeah. Brent, do we see, do we get a feedback of what the analysis is? Are we getting any better about the data that we're getting back? Is it getting better, is the quality of the groundwater?
It's, over time, it is getting better. We've been able to go from quarterly sampling to sampling twice a year now for the majority of the events, so we've been able to reduce that sampling. As it touches in here, the third permit application, which hasn't been done yet, but we're working towards, is to reduce the number of monitoring wells that we have to monitor from. That'll be another indication, as trends have been established, and those trends tend to not the same, change too much over time, therefore, we should be able to reduce our monitoring. The landfill technically is not closed, it's still going through remediation, so we're somewhat limited in what we can do, as opposed to if you want to compare it to landfill number one, where that landfill has been closed now and delisted, so we're to the bare minimum. We're not there yet on two, but we are getting there.
Thank you, Brent.
Anything else? Wendy, is that all? Okay, thank you. All those in favor, the motion now on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It sounds unanimous to me.
Next up is Farmington Pond Maintenance Agreement. In your packet is the memo, as well as a copy of the proposal from, bless you, from Lakeland Biologists. You can see there's cost comparisons in there over the last couple of years. I would recommend entering into an agreement with Lakeland Biologists for the 2020 Farmington Ponds Maintenance Program at the estimated cost of $15,402. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Special Service Areas, and our maintenance budget for the ponds is $22,200.
I have a motion to that effect, please.
Who made that motion?
Motion by Alderman Crawford. I have a second. Second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes?
Brent, on page two, number six, the liability, is this customary that they take no responsibility or no liability for exposure?
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all is in favor of approval, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, that sounds unanimous.
Next up is our 2020 sidewalk bids, bid tabulation. We received six bids this year, very good turnout for the proposed work. Globe Construction Company out of Addison was the low bidder at $46,415, or the same contractor that did the workforce last year. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Globe Construction in the amount of $46,415 for the city's annual sidewalk program. This work will be paid for from line item 015-310-6003.
I have a motion to that effect, please. Alderman Snell, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all is in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Again, unanimous.
Next up is our mowing bid tabulation. We had three contractors bid on that project, and based on their pricing, recommending approvals of three different bidders for the different components. First up would be approval of the low bid from the Langton Group in the amount of $285 per mowing, for the mowing of the water department sites, which will be paid for from line item 615-810-6040.
I have a motion to that effect, please. Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Snell. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did we have a question? Alderman Freeman.
I was just gonna, just say, so, they, the Langton Group actually dropped their price from $380 last year to $285 this year?
I'm sorry, did I do a typo? No, it's $285. Langton Group, $285 for water. The $380 you're looking at is 2019.
Right, so their, so their price went down from 2019.
Yeah, the Langton Group did not bid last year, but the price, yeah, the price is cheaper this year than it was last year, correct?
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous approval.
Next then, we'd have the approval of the low bid from Lawn Maintenance Services in the amount of $520 per mowing for the mowing of the public work sites, which will be paid for from line item 05-310-6002.
I have a motion to that effect.
Who made that motion?
Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Snell. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
And then we have the approval of the low bid from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of $225 per mowing for the Farmington Ponds, and again, this work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund.
I have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Snell, second by Alderman Porter. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Unanimous approval.
Next up, we have our 2020 landscape maintenance bids. We received three bids for the landscape maintenance program. I apologize for the typo on the memo, they're supposed to be 2020. This is the areas of downtown, meaning downtown streetscape, some surrounding outside areas. We have the welcome signs around town that are included, as well as some other landscape islands. Area Services Incorporated was the low bidder at $23,705. You'll notice it was a pretty tight bid for the three bids received. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Area Services in the amount of $23,705 for the 2020 landscape maintenance program. This work will be paid for from Street Department light items 015-310-6002 and 6826.
I have a motion to approve, please. Motion by Alderman Reblow, second. Alderman McGee. Questions or comments? Alderman Snell.
Just a typo on the memo, I think. The first line, the bids were open for the 2019. I didn't know if you caught that.
That's what I, that's why I apologize for it was.
Oh, sorry, I missed that, sorry.
Any other comments or questions concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all is in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Once again, that's unanimous approval.
Next up then, we have our tree program bid tabulation. I did get the right date on this memo. The following bids, we had three bids. The low bid was from Trees R Us in the amount of $54,600. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Trees R Us in the amount of $54,600 for tree work from May 1st, 2020, to April 30th, 2021, to the city of Belvedere.
I have a motion to that effect, please. Alderman Crawford, and a second Alderman Reblow. Questions or comments? Alderman Freeman, and then Alderman Porter.
So, at $54,600, we're, we only budgeted $40,000 for this, so we're gonna be over $14,600?
Yeah, that was, the estimate we used is what, for quantity, so based on our budget amount of $40,000, that will remain within the budgetary amount for a refund, unless we have severe storms or so forth that causes us to do work that we really hadn't planned on, then we'd go back to council for authorization on that, unless we have those instances.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Next up was the intersection review at Garfield and Third Street. In your packet is the memo for the review, current status of this intersection. The intersection is unmarked, and the two streets involved, Garfield and West Third, one block either, any direction from the subject intersection are required to stop. Based on the IDOT's traffic volume map, both streets have an ADT of 200 or less. ADT is the average daily traffic for a 24-hour period. Police department records indicate one accident has occurred at this intersection over the last five-year period, which occurred on June 21st, 2016. Pedestrian activity is typical residential neighborhood. Note site distance limitations are noted. Based on that, on this information and IDOT's manual and uniform traffic control devices, no changes are warranted at this time.
I believe we have somebody in the audience who'd like to comment on this. Mr. Organo, did you want to comment on this?
Yes, I would. He said there was one accident. Excuse me, I'm not standing up. A certain accident, was there a certain day or year in that one?
The accident information is June 21st of 2016.
Well, last year, there was, I don't know when it was reported, the past two years, died right there by one of the T West Third corner. They used Garfield Road as a speed strip. I talked to all the neighbors around there, and they said, well, if you need a petition, just let me know. One landed up in their yard last year. Granted, it was winter time, but the road, virtue's got the right of way. They got a stop sign on Fourth Street. There's no yield sign, which we're trying to get on Garfield side to yield people, because they come flying through there. I've been sitting up there in the morning and afternoon, and I mean, they go up to 50 mile an hour, and there's only two or three accidents there, so I don't know how it came to be on record.
Okay, well, keep in mind, I guess, one block either direction, the next intersection for both streets going either, any direction you go, has to come to a stop.
Well, if you put a yield sign on each side of, on Garfield, that Third Street, because we got kids there also, what if there were kids in that front lawn on the corner there, and a car went up in there to hit the kids? I'd rather put up a hundred dollar sign to take away two lives of kids. There's nothing there.
Well, again, the conditions that are there, the posted 25 mile an hour speed limit, the traffic, the intersections, the accident history, all indicates that having the unmarked intersection is still appropriate. However, if council decides they want to do something different, they can certainly do that.
What accident history does? You only say one accident since 16. Correct. This is four years, and I've seen three in the past three.
Well, that would depend on if there were police reports made, because that's a catalog of.
Residents ain't gonna pull out your port.
Okay, well, here's what we normally do, and this comes up all the time. Everybody on every street wants stop sign at every corner, and I get that, because our kids are important. We have a 25 mile an hour in-the-city speed limit on all streets that are not connector streets. So, what we'd usually do in an instance like this, is after we've looked at it for the state warrants, to see if it meets warrants, is we'll put the speed trailer out there, which is, will slow people down for a while. If you, if the council decides that they want to put signs up there, what is your suggestion? Yield signs, what kind of signs you want?
Well, I mean, just something noticeable for people to see that yield to the Third Street, so people don't complain. I mean, it's not, people are responsible, it's these idiots that go from zero, let's see how fast my car can go, to 60 mile an hour. I mean, there's been, if I have to set up surveillance visiting on my house at that corner, right, that helps you guys out, I'll do that, but I don't see any reason for it. My work should be this good.
Alderman Burt.
So, are you just looking for a yield sign, not a stop sign?
No, I don't have, I mean, a stop sign would be ridiculous, that close quarter corner, it's only like 300 feet. But I mean, a yield sign at least gives somebody a warning, you know, that there's a thing here to slow it down. If they don't, they get in an accident, then it's actually their fault. But if my grandkids or anybody next door, grandkids are out there, because they got kids out there all the time. And granted, it could be at night, most of the time, you got idiots out more at night than you do during the day.
Alderman Porter.
I just want to ask Chief Woody, what is the protocol on that? If there's an unmarked intersection, and they have a side-to-side collision, who, whose fault is it if they're both, there's no traffic sign?
Yeah, if they're coming to the intersection approximately at the same time, then the person on the right has the right of way. So, the person on the left would have to yield.
Which would be Third Street has the right of way. Right, if they're going west, they're going to be, they're not, I'll sit there. I'm not kidding you. Like, I, you talked about this one before, and I do here for less people. That'd be great, seeing if we leave and do five-foot jumps, you know? But I can see the kids there, and I talked to a lot of the people around there, and they all know me, because as you know, the three, four man for all of their district, and they won't come to me now, a lot of people come in here in that area saying, hey, you know, can you put a word in? I say, well, I can, but I've physically seen this in the past four years, accidents where a car was knocked up in the driveway or yard into a tree.
So, Brent and chief, if we put a yield sign where he's requesting it, does that muddy up the situation, or does that help the situation? Brent? I just want to make sure that, you know, we have, we make it as safe as possible, let's find the right way to do that.
Right, based on, based, because all four directions, one block away is a stop, and there's so few cars going through the intersection, it doesn't matter where you're gonna put the yield sign. Typically, you put the yield sign at the minor street, and then let the major street move traffic, because that's what you want to do, you want to have that traffic flow. But in this case, because of the scenario and the nature and where it's at, and its relationship to the other roads, it doesn't really matter. So, you can just pick a, pick a street if you want to put yield signs up, you can put yield signs up.
We have a motion to place yield signs.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Alderman Burt, and second by Alderman Snell.
Mr. Mayor, which street are we placing the yield signs?
I don't know.
It would be on Garfield, so the street would be headed right of way.
Is that what the movement wishes?
So, north and south?
North and south, yeah.
Yes.
Do you want it on both sides?
Would be.
Yes.
And if we have to pay for it, we'll pay for it.
Okay. You got your checkbook? You earned it here.
I could, I could order.
No, no.
I, I, this ain't for kids.
a three-week process of ordinance change, that set up a thing to monitor it and see if you can catch any of the culprits, because let them know that they'll be more liable.
First, we've got a motion and a second, and we've had some discussion. Is there any other discussion? There are none, all those in favor of approving stop, or yield signs going both ways on Garfield to free up the speedsters on, what's the, Cross Street?
Third.
Third Street. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the ayes have it, so, anybody nay? Okay, it'll come back to council for final resolution. Thanks for coming tonight. Sure.
There's any, like Brent said, there's all kinds of streets in the areas, you know, and I understand that's such a short period, but if I went around like I did before with people, there's lots of streets that need help. I mean, this was brought up a while ago, and it was big confrontation, well, IDOT says this, well, IDOT ain't there, and Mr. Snow brought up, anyway, it pets the culprits. I see culprits, I call them, and I'm not a snitch, I think I'm a particular citizen, because they can't be everywhere at once, as you very well know probably about me. And if I could stop these people, I would. I mean, it's just, it's these mostly younger kids or people at night that are actually idiotic, I have no responsibility. But there's other streets and people, well, I'm sure if you pass that thing around, I hear hundreds of people that I've talked to in the past five, six years since I ran, there were, you know, I'll put that the opposite for a sign.
We really can't do that, but I appreciate the spirit of it.
People telling me, they come to me, that's why I was running for Third District, because a lot of people know me in the area, in this town, that I believe in what they want, it's not what everybody else sees. IDOT can't yet.
To be clear, because we obey state law, if someone would have an accident and challenge the legitimacy of having those yield signs and sue us, we could potentially lose in court. But, and we want to make sure that you feel safe, and that people on your street feel safe, so you'll get your signs.
I agree with you on that.
Sure, no problem. Thanks for coming tonight.
No problem.
So, next up, we're gonna have Scott from Azabar revisit what they do for us, and how that's going to help us with some of our revenue issues.
And Mr. Mayor, as we start this discussion on the gas use tax, the actual top three items on item five are actually all interrelated. They appear three times, because eventually, we'll be taking three different actions on each of them, or one on each of them, but for discussion purposes, it makes sense to address them all at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, for having me tonight. I'm Scott Shamberg with Azabar Government Solutions. We've been working on revenue audits on behalf of Belvidere. We've been returning you money through our revenue audits to make sure you're getting every penny you should be, from utility taxes, cable franchise fees, sales taxes, and other revenue streams. As we did the, the gas tax that the city has in town, we did that, and we found a number of addresses that were miscoded in the gas companies' records, and they were miscoded to unincorporated. We fixed those and got them switched to being incorporated, and now you're getting the revenues that you should have been on the tax, on the tax bills from those residents and businesses. And as we got through that, when we were looking at the data, based on the size of Belvidere and the type of industry that it has, the numbers that were coming in from your gas revenues were not really where they should be, and so we took a deeper dive, and what we found was, there are a number of users that are buying their gas from overstate lines, from third-party companies, and when that happens, if it's overstate lines, it becomes interstate commerce, and it's no longer taxable under the utility tax. And so, when we were looking at this, we, based on our estimates, we estimated that the city was missing out on conservatively nine hundred thousand dollars a year in revenues from your gas tax, and we have a way to fix this, the gas use tax, which would come in and substitute for the utility tax for those users who are buying their gas from overstate lines, and those users would then pay the gas use tax instead of the utility tax, and therefore bringing parity to those residents and businesses who are currently paying the utility tax, that everyone is paying it as they should be, as was originally intended by the original utility tax. So I know I've been here a couple times talking about it, I know that you may have some more questions, and I'm here to, I'm happy to answer any of those questions that may come up.
And the council may recall that what created this mess was deregulation of the utilities in the first place, when electricals deregulated, the state did the right thing, and they switched all the utility taxes to a per kilowatt hour tax, and we can collect from anywhere, but they didn't do that for natural gas for some reason, nobody really knows why, if it was a good lobby or what have you, but because of the way it's written in the state statute, the U.S. Constitution prohibits from collecting that tax across state lines. So like Scott said, this would actually put the people purchasing the gas overstate lines on a close to equal footing, or playing field as those buying from NICOR.
So, open the discussion. Alderman Freeman.
So on my NICOR bill, under the taxes part, there's a municipal utility tax for Illinois dash Belvidere, one thirty-four point sixteen at five point one five percent, equals six dollars and ninety-one cents. Belvidere doesn't get any of that?
Belvidere gets all of that.
That's, you're buying your tax in state, you're buying your gas in state, so you're paying the tax.
Okay, so.
Whereas if I, if I chose provider that was based in Wisconsin, I would not be, I would not be paying that tax.
If I might, so the way, the way it works is, you still get, if you, if you were to buy that gas from another provider, NICOR would still deliver it to you, but they're not the ones supplying it to you, so therefore, that tax would not show up on your bill.
So, so this five cents, zero point zero five, five cents per therm would not apply to my bill?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Correct, it would only be for those people who are purchasing their gas from overstate lines.
Because that, that would equal, like, right now, I pay, like I said, for the amount of thermes I've used, six dollars and ninety-one cents, but when I added that up, it would, it would have been like seven dollars and forty-six cents.
Yeah, and some of the, and some of the, it's not a perfect system in terms of what's, that five percent will equal five cents, but over time, it shifts back and forth as to which ones, and it evens out over time, so that's why you try to keep it in parity.
Scott, if I may interject something here. It's kind of like, and if you do, if you, if you do the research, when we deregulated a lot of things here in Illinois, at first, people save money, but if you look at, over time, and those out-of-state agencies raise the gas price, raise the gas price, you're still paying NICOR. So a lot of people, if they look at it, year after, year over year, they'll find out they're not saving money anymore, and so this is just equitable, and primarily, the amount that we're, we would gain from this are industrial users, and as you know, I spent the last year talking to our major industries about this, and they're well aware that we're gonna start collecting this, and that helps to fill a big hole in our budget every year. It's fair, if one person has to, one industry has to pay it, then they should all have to pay it. And they're aware of this, and they know they've had a holiday for a long period of time, but nobody's shutting up shop and moving out because of having to pay a tax that is law in the city, so. Additional comments? Yes?
I guess I don't understand, are they doing something illegal?
No.
No, so it's just, it's a loophole, basically, in the law, because they're, they are, they chose to buy their gas from overstate lines, and because of the way the law, the law is written, they just, they don't have to pay it.
That's what I thought I heard you say, but how can we get them to come to us instead? How do we get them to see it?
Okay, I'll try to explain this, it's probably more legal mumble jumbo than anybody wants to know. The state law is written for non-home rules and, and home rules actually have suffered the same fate because of the interstate commerce clause in the United States Constitution, but the way it's written is, there's a charge placed upon, a five percent charge placed upon the sale of gas to users for gas that is sold within the state of Illinois. So, we are actually charging NICOR, and of course, they pass it on, they're allowed to, to the end user, that's why it shows up on your bill, but NICOR is paying that tax of five percent of its gross receipts from money, receipts from selling gas within the city of Belvidere in our case. We cannot, under the U.S. Constitution, charge an occupation tax like that across state lines. And so what happens when they deregulated a lot of the industries, mostly larger gas users in Belvidere, it's gonna be mostly your, your larger industrial users, there might be some residents that pick up on it, realize that, hey, if I go to Wisconsin, or Iowa, or Michigan, or Washington, and buy my gas from them, it all goes in the same pipe, if I buy my gas from them, I don't have to pay that five percent tax that NICOR is charging me, because they have to pay the tax. You're talking about thousands, thousands of dollars a bill, it adds up, right, so they buy it out of state, and they don't have to pay that tax. What we do is, instead of charging NICOR that tax, we tax the purchase of the gas. We try, we actually tax the end user, no different than a gasoline tax. So no, we're no longer taxing the producer or the seller, you're taxing the industrial or what have you consumer, and that's why we charge on thermes used, because you can't tax on gross receipts. That's why it's based on five cents per therm. For every therm you buy, you pay five cents of tax. Which leads us to the second part of it. Again, anybody that's buying in state and is paying the five, and is paying the five percent to NICOR now, they're not affected by this at all. Their taxes will not go up. Collection-wise, obviously, the city of Belvidere cannot go out to all these different entities and say, give us our five cents per therm, because number one, NICOR won't tell us who they are, and number two, that's a lot of work. NICOR has an agreement in place, it was in your packets, by which they will collect the tax for us, and then remit the money to us. They know who these people are, and they're able to collect that tax, they take three percent of the revenues that they collect as their fee for doing that, and then they remit the remainder to us. So, that's the method of collection.
And, and in the case of NICOR, they actually would like to have this, because it brings parity for them, because they're in a sense in competition with these out-of-state providers, and they're at a disadvantage, because their rates have to be higher because of the tax as opposed to those outside.
Additional questions or comments? Yes?
Bring some parity to it. Your, your COMED utility tax, which is across the board, whether it's in-state, out-of-state, you receive around one point four million a year. Your gas tax right now, you're barely getting about three hundred and thirty, three hundred and forty thousand a year, so that's the difference. You can see that there is revenue missing when you're only getting, you know, barely, not even a third of what we're receiving from COMED because of the technicality that they're talking about.
You know, it makes that pretty obvious, as productivity regulation, they're usually pretty comparable, and the reason why they separated was because of the out-of-state purchases.
Yeah, based on our, our numbers here, from when we did the analysis on your actual data, in fiscal year twenty thirteen, the estimated missing revenues were almost nine hundred and fifty thousand. In twenty fourteen, it was one point three million, same in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen was just over a million, and twenty seventeen was nine hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Alderman Snow.
So if I read this right, and I'm, I don't profess to understand all the mumble jumbo, so, it talks about the five cent portion, but you just mentioned that NICOR is gonna get three cents out of that five, is that correct?
No, no, three percent of the gross receipts. So we, we charge five cents per therm. Let's say we collect a hundred dollars for the year, they get three dollars of that hundred dollars.
Please also understand that Azabar provides this as a service, and we have a contract with them, and they take a.
I was gonna get that.
All right, I'll let the legal man do that. Yes, Alderman Freeman.
I think when we discussed this a long time ago, and I don't remember if it was for NICOR, if we were doing it for COMED, but we pretty much came to the conclusion that, like, eighty to ninety percent of the residents are, like, like me, that I already go with NICOR, and this mostly affects just all industrial around here.
We don't know. Sure, because they won't tell us, but that's our assumption, and that's Azabar's.
Just based on general knowledge of how the state works, that the large users tend to benefit the most from, from switching providers, and they can get a better rate because they're such large users, so typically, yes, it is mostly commercial and industrial, but there are some residents out there who are a little more savvy about this sort of information, and know that they might be able to save a few dollars on their, on their bill.
And there are a lot of large users.
Yeah, but mostly it's the large users.
Agribusiness and otherwise. Alderman Burton.
So we don't exactly know who these users are, correct?
No, we do not, because that's privileged information.
Okay, yeah, I thought that was, when we had discussed this previously, we were gonna have some of the businesses come in and talk to us, see how they felt about this.
No, I talked to them through the growth dimensions, legal team, and we've been talking to them over the last year and a half about how we were gonna do this, and that's what we did.
The mayor wanted to go back and, he kind of put the brakes next, he wanted to go back and talk to a lot of the big users before we brought this forward again.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna come here.
No, there was never any of them coming here kind of thing.
So they want us to tax them?
They agree that they have been getting out from under the tax, when it's legally a tax that we should be collecting based on our city ordinance. And nobody's gonna jump up and down on, they have to start paying it, but the consensus of opinion was, they know that it's, they're, by rights, they should be paying it, and no one has really protested violently about it, so.
I'm making the assumption that there's no way that we can collect the back taxes that they should have been paying, correct?
Correct.
No.
No, and stating that they should have been paying is kind of a misnomer, they were never under any obligation to pay those amounts earlier, they just, they didn't exist as a tax. This is a new tax being placed upon those that don't have to pay the current utility tax.
It was simply a loophole that was the result of the way the state wrote the deregulation law.
And to be perfectly clear, every year, and we were very open about this, our expenses went up a million and a half dollars from jump this year over last year, just on the regular contracts that we have, and so our costs continue to go up. And at the wish of the council, we have not voted a rise in, in our levy for the past two years, which is a cumulative effect over five years of another million and a half dollars that we would lose out on when all of the other taxing bodies passed their levies, and we have stuck within the tax caps when we haven't needed to do that because we're home rule. At a point in time, you can't continue to reduce our revenue with, we have rising costs, then you reach a point where you have to cut services. And I think at, at that point in time, then, then you have a real problem. That's why the utility tax was put into effect, was originally supposed to be used to our structural repairs to our infrastructure, but when two thousand and eight came around and the whole world went down, our revenue was truncated to the point where we had furlough days, we retired people at the top of the pay scales in the departments, we did what we needed to do to survive. Yes?
The mayor started to mention earlier the agreement we have with Azabar. You recall that we did not retain Azabar to specifically look for just this tax, they were looking at all of our income streams as well as expense streams. Most of the income streams determine what we were missing out on, by the, through Comcast and cable franchise fees, or COMED, or in this case, NICOR. That original agreement has a provision in which they recover, they receive as their compensation a contingency fee of forty-five percent of all revenues collected by the city annualized over three years. And frankly, it made a lot of sense in some of those cases, because there's a ton of work they had to do. They'd go through all the COMED bills and figure out exactly which ones are linking, which ones aren't being paid, and things like that, and go through the entire city's database as far as properties, and determine which ones weren't being counted. When they brought this up, frankly, this was a issue that, staff-wise, we had looked at years and years and years ago, and then, of course, forgotten about. And it didn't require the same amount of work on their part, because they said, hey, you don't have this tax. If you pass it, you'll make up almost a million dollars a year, and by the way, here's the form agreement that NICOR wants. And they realized that, frankly, forty-five percent is probably a little bit steep of contingency fee for the work on this case. I called them and said, hey, it seems a little steep on our end, and so the third part of this, if you choose to move forward with the gas use tax at five cents per therm, they have proposed an agreement, and we went back and forth on this a few times, and what we came out for as a recommendation would be to reduce their forty-five percent contingency on the gas use tax alone, down to eighteen percent. But instead of going over three But instead of going over three years, it would go over four years. It's kind of a quid pro quo to put more money in the city's pockets. Frankly, it takes quite a bit out of Azabar's pockets, but they realized that the amount of work done in this program, well, now he's been out here two, three times on it, the amount of work done in this program...
I think my particular guest, Bill Fickers, knew that.
Is not the same as it was for Comcast, or ComEd, or some of the other revenue streams they looked at. So if we go forward with this, you'll have to do three different votes on each, but the last one is that amendment to the agreement to reduce the contingency fee paid to Azabar.
So any additional questions or comments before we work our way through these? So item A, the gas use tax, may I have a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Alderman Snell, second by Alderman Crawford. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor, approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds unanimous. Under B, Nycor gas use tax collection agreement, may I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Rebeau. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, I believe that's unanimous. And item C, the amendment to the Azabar agreement with a reduced fee basis in the contract, may I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Ratcliffe, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, I believe that's unanimous. This will come back to City Council for final disposition.
Again, Mr. Mayor, just on a procedural note, you'll remember that sitting tabled at council is a motion to direct me to draft the ordinances which you just forwarded to council. Obviously, they're already drafted, so when this comes up at council, we can either take that at the table and then remove it from the agenda because it's not needed, or just simply prove it, and then move on to these, but you'll see that one on there as well, and these will be separate.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
No problem.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilmember.
Under item D, this evening, we have financial year 21 budget and discussion, which will be directed by our financial director, Ms. Tobin. Tobin, you have the floor.
You should just, the only thing I put on your desk tonight was one piece of paper, general fund. This just incorporated what we talked about two weeks ago. I just wanted you to see, this has everything in it that we had talked about. This includes your two firefighters, your two part-time police personnel, all of your equipment, all of your capital. It also includes $100,000 additional transfer to the capital for Logan Avenue, which would leave you with a balance of, not a balance, I'm sorry, a positive budget with $5,540, if you look in that yellow column all the way at the bottom. So this was based off of our discussions two weeks ago. I can pull up anything you want me to. If there's any questions you wanted to specifically talk about, we can do that.
So specific questions for Becky concerning these figures? Yes, Alderman Frank?
Well, I wasn't here two weeks ago, so I didn't hear this, but I'm just thinking, there's a lot of large items on here that are budgeted, and I'm just wondering what we're going to do, are we going to try to tweak this and cut some things out, or how are we going to pay for all these?
We've already been through that process, and in several different steps, and so we're open for discussion. Do you have some specific items that you want to talk about?
No, what process are you talking about that you've already been through?
Well, we had a discussion on every part of the budget, starting six weeks ago, by department. Initially, a budget is presented to each of the departments, they work on their budget, then they meet with Becky and I. We have them tweak their budget through that process, then that, then each portion of that budget is brought forward by each of the department heads. We started doing that six weeks ago, and we present a different part of the budget. We have a thorough discussion, you might remember, everything's been on the screen, and we dissect each of the department's budget requests. And what you missed was us going through this, the capital budget projects, when you were here, not here. So if there is something specific that you have a question about, that's what Becky wants to try to answer for you tonight.
No, I just missed one meeting, but I'm just thinking, if we don't speak up now, and next week we have to pass this budget, we might be in trouble.
Okay, we have $5,540 left after we execute this budget based on the projected revenues.
Right. So what this budget entails, I've added everything based off of what our discussions were two weeks ago. So that entire list of capital that was under capital schedule includes $993,328 worth of capital expenses, that's in here, that's already in there. Your new initiatives, which included the two new firefighters, a small increase for the community development administrative assistant, and your two part-time police department employees, is all included in there. I also included the number, I was told, which was, I think, $35,000 for the mosquito spray for next year, that was discussed as well, so that is also in there. So right now, all of it's in there. So if anybody wants to talk about something further, or talk to your department heads, or if somebody wants something removed, this is the time to do it, because this week is when I am trying to finish up the budget ordinance, that'll come back to you next Monday as the first reading.
Alderman Frank? I, you made a comment, and I want to make sure I'm clear about it, that we might be in trouble. What do you mean, we might be in trouble? What kind of trouble?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of big-ticket items on here, and I think that we don't have the revenue coming in.
Well, we do, and that's what the balance sheet says, that after paying for everything that's been proposed, and after going through every department and looking at each of their requests, we will have, we have projected to have $5,540 left over at the end of the year. I will tell you this, this does not include the potential that we have for revenue from Azabar, because that was not included, was it, Becky?
No, that's not included.
And so if we have increased housing starts, or we have other increased revenue streams that come into the city, but the idea is to have a balanced budget without a deficit, so that we're not going to deficit spend, and we never have deficit spent, so.
And my concern, yeah, my concern has been that we're not funding the road improvements properly, that's what really scared me about this budget. But if you are going to approve the gas tax, then I guess that will help us in the future with the roads. I know that's also a concern of our Public Works Director. Like I said, this year did not include a lot of funding for that, that's why it looks as healthy as it does. In a normal year, there would be another $1 million that Brent would be asking for to do roads, so next year...
Which we would have to take from our reserve fund to be able to cover.
Correct. So next year, remember, so this will set aside, this year will be setting aside 1.3 million towards Logan Avenue, so next year, there's going to have to be 700,000 just for Logan Avenue.
Yeah.
What about our stormwater problems? Have we even started on those? I know we did the studies, but we're going to have a lot of expenses with that as well.
Brent, do you want to address that?
Next month's agenda for Public Works will be the presentation of the results of the feasibility study that Fairgram conducted for us on the establishment of the stormwater utility as a funding mechanism for those storm sewer projects. A lot will be coming up in the April meeting. And also keep in mind, so there's no confusion, what we're talking about with this yellow sheet here is strictly general fund revenues, expenses, it does not include anything for water and sewer. Water and sewer are self-sufficient, and as you know, unfortunately, on the water side, we've come to the point now where we need to do a rate increase, so you're going to be seeing that coming up here in the near future to take effect, probably by the May 1 date. But no confusion there, the May, right now, our balance on the water side is red, we do have a positive cash flow projected on the San Antonio sewer side at this point in time.
Yeah, so Alderman Porter, then Alderman Freeman?
All right, I have a question for Chief Woody, this is kind of like a two-part question here. First of all, for the community service officer, I know we talked about that, was for code enforcement, is this going to be an armed officer?
No, it would be a non-sworn civilian position that would assist Carol with city ordinances.
Okay. I'd just like to throw this out here, that it seems like the code enforcement's working fine, being complaint-driven at this point, I mean, from the reports that we've been getting from the community service. I would like to see, rather, take, given today's environment, I'd rather see an armed officer at the schools, and make sure that we cover all our schools and the safety for the kids, you know? I think that'd be money more well-spent, of course, then you're talking about a full-time officer, I guess, correct?
Yeah, that would be a full-time officer with full benefits, where this would be a part-time, non-sworn civilian position without benefits, which, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in a ballpark difference of about $17,000 for the non-sworn to probably roughly $100,000, including benefits for a sworn with insurance and pension, so on and so forth.
That's about right.
Chief, we already have a school resource officer available for the schools, correct?
Yeah, well, we have one currently in the high school that does address issues at the elementary and middle school levels. Plus, to have another officer at the schools would require the cooperation of the school district itself.
Alderman Freeman?
So when I look at this paper tonight, what really jumps out at me is the last two lines, we're up a little bit. The total revenue, the gross general fund revenues, and the gross general fund expenditures for the last three and now fourth year in a row, both revenue and expenditures have gone up by roughly $1 million each year. So that just tells me, you know, the more you have, the more you spend. You know, $20 million, and you're saying Brent's a million dollars short, that's bothersome to me. And I'd also, you know, I like to see in this budget, I'm a big advocate with the recent turmoil, I guess you would call it, body cameras for our officers, I'd like to see that budgeted, so we don't have to work that out later.
You want to address that? Mike, you want me to address that? Becky, you want to address that?
Well, I was going to address, so in, when you look at your revenue number for fiscal year '21, the $20,145, remember, 1.2 million of that is reserves. I have to plug it into the budget so that we have a balanced budget. So when you take out that 1.2 million, your actual revenues is $18,945, so it's actually less than what was budgeted for fiscal year '20 for revenues. And last two weeks ago, I handed out something that actually said we're looking at about $250,000 less in revenue over this current year, because this is just a budget number. So, yeah, so you kind of need to take out the 1.2 million, because it's actually already sitting in your reserves, it's not an actual revenue source.
And please remember that by city ordinance, we keep three to six months of reserves in our reserve fund, because we don't ever want to get caught like we did in 2008. And if you've been listening to the news the last 10 days, we're in a recession. We had a massive correction in the markets, and we don't know where that's going to go. So Attorney Drall, did you want to address the body camera situation?
First, a question for Becky. We had a huge additional increase in funding for pension liabilities also, correct? In the last two years?
For pension liabilities, correct. Well, every year we do.
Right.
But, yeah.
$2.2 million.
We're almost up to 2.5 at this point, that we pay every year for pensions.
Large chunk in increase in the expenses that we're looking at. As far as body cameras go, I'll preface it with probably shooting, I might get shot, but pardon the pun. Body cameras, in my opinion, not a legal opinion, actually assist the municipalities and the police officers if done correctly, because nine times out of 10, they are going to exonerate any claim against the police department. And that one time out of 10, they do not, well, guess what? Right thing's being done. The problem with them is really a two-part problem, one is state law, and I don't want to eat up too much time tonight, I'm happy to talk to you individually, put it on a future agenda, and go through the state law with you, but when they adopted the body cam statute in the state of Illinois, no surprise, they kind of screwed it up. For example, body cam, in one part of the statute, it says, "Body cams stored or footage is not subject to FOIA." The next paragraph says, "It is subject to FOIA." But to release it, you have to go through the entire footage and blur out any images that shouldn't be released for private information, personalities, things like that. Well, number one, that means you have to have the money to store it, which is expensive, but not unreasonable. But then you have to have somebody to go through and comply with all the FOIA requests, and trust me, they will come. We see that right with our existing police reports. You have to have a body to go through all that footage and prepare it all for dissemination to whoever's requesting the FOIA report. You're talking about a salary or two salaries to do that. That's one problem with the statute. The next one is for the poor police officers. It says, well, they have to have an automated contact with the public, unless they're talking to a victim, and then they're supposed to turn it off if the victim asks them to, which request has to be made on camera supposedly, when feasible. But then if they determine the victim's actually possibly perpetrator, they're supposed to turn it back on. And then if they're dealing with children, it's supposed to be turned off, unless, of course, the children's perpetrating, they have to make snap decisions constantly, whether it's on or off, or on or off, or on or off. It'd be much easier if they said, "Leave it on, just leave it on," and then let the judge decide what gets taken out or not. But they did, so you got police officers making snap decisions on that. That's a problem with it, you can work through that. But those are the two big problems statute-wise. From a practical standpoint, if we're going to really explore body cameras with the police department, number one, we should look at it seriously internally, see how we're going to fund it, how we're going to make it work, but two, it is going to require a conversation with the sheriff's office and the county, because as you know, we share records department with them. They are the holders and the people actually supply the FOIA responses for all of our records, including dashboard cameras right now. So we have to work with them, if any needed personnel, maybe a joint decision who to hire, how to hire it, how to fund it, things like that. So as we go through this discussion, if the council wishes to move forward that concept, we're going to include discussions with the sheriff's department and the county as to how we bring that about.
Which also means the county board. So it's going to be a process, and we have no problem with starting that process, looking at the hardware, looking at the people that we're going to need to hire, looking at the cloud we're going to need to store it in, but it's going to have to work its way through county government, too, so it's down the road. But we have no problem in looking at doing that, to comply with the state law. Hopefully, they're going to clean up the statute, because it's, I mean, it's almost ridiculous when you try to read it. Turn it on, turn it off, turn it on, turn it off. And I understand why, they want to protect children, they want to protect non-perpetrators, and so forth. But, you know, I think like anything else, there needs to be some common sense applied, and people sitting in Springfield sometimes, unfortunately, seem to lack common sense, because a couple of things that you guys are all aware of that are on this council, it was 2.2 last year, it's 2.5 this year, those are unfunded mandates from the state that we have to come up with that money out of our taxpayers' budget to take care of a structural problem in police and fire pensions that they created in Springfield. And the reality is, we want to make sure our police and fire get their pensions, they earned them, you know? So it's something that, Marcia, Alderman Freeman, I think we're happy to start looking at doing that, but it's a process we'll have to work through. Yes, Alderman Snow?
So Alderman Porter and Kip can probably, and Police Chief with the community service officers, right now, I get boatloads of calls of people complaining about property maintenance issues, and if we can be proactive and have somebody out there on the street, because there's a whole bunch of people that just give up and don't complain, and they're just tired of complaining, because there can, you can never catch up with it, because we don't have the manpower to do it. So I think that it's going to be a positive thing, it's also going to help free up Officer Blankenship, the big dog in the community service portion, to do more proactive stuff with the community, so I'm in favor of that. The body cameras, I, you know, I see your point and stuff, but to be quite frank, I'm not a big supporter necessarily of it, I'm not anti it, but as far as budget-wise, I don't see that being something that we have to get into at this point, and if we get all this money from the utility to the gas tax, it might be something that will spur it. The other thing is, when it does come to this, it's all well and good... The other thing is, when it does come to this, um, it's all well and good to worry about all that flooding issues that's on the south side of the town. Well, all you people that voted no to raise the tax levy, you get to answer to them, because I'm giving them your phone numbers, not me, because it's a, it's not a good idea. And we were trying to keep, like the mayor said, for years in the, um, under the tax caps that we would be under if we weren't home-rolled. And I commend our administration for doing that for all those times, so. So, if you have an issue, you know, think about things that we could have done in the long run. And again, I'm guessing, based on the amounts that we were talking and the fact that the EAB, I believe it's called, would have probably risen, the homeowner probably would have not seen any increase in their city portion of the tax. Everybody else, they might have, like the school, because they're the biggest taxing body, so, just tossing that out there.
Well, this is the reality of it. We provide a very high level of service to our community. And as we go forward, and you see the presentation on the stormwater, we've also found a way to, to pay for that. But it will be up to this council to make the decision whether or not they're going to go with how we raise the revenue to do that. And you cannot spend millions of dollars without finding a source of revenue, just say, "Well, it's going to come in." We don't borrow money, here's the point. We're not in debt. We don't, we're not eight million, or ten million, or twenty million dollars in debt in the City of Belvedere. We have a balanced budget. We've had a balanced budget every year, as long as I can remember, and that's kind of what we do here. And as far as shaving more off of the budget, we've had discussions where people, "Well, let's take five thousand dollars off of that, or ten thousand dollars off of that." We have skilled department heads that have been in their positions for years, and they're experts at what they do. And that's why we ask for what we ask for, and why every year, we either come out a little bit ahead of where we thought we were going to, or a little bit behind of where we thought we were going to. So, you know, I think this is a good budget. I think it's a good budget, just like last year's bucket, budget. I commend Becky for the, uh, what she's done. When we have our audits, we have never yet had a problem with any of our audits. Our audits are always clean. You know, it's a, it's a well-run business here. Anybody else have any other comments on this subject? Yes, Alderman Burton?
So, as of now, we're spending more money than we're bringing in, right?
We're taking money from reserves to cover some of our costs, but that's what reserves are for.
Well, I kind of agree with Alderman Frank. I think, uh, I think we need to find some places to make some cuts and stop spending. I think if, if we don't do that, I mean, who's going to do it?
That's why we build a reserve fund at several months, to be able to cover these contingencies when they come up in the budgeting process. Yes, Alderman Frank?
I've been an Alderman for five years, and I have not seen us cut anything, ever.
Okay, what do you want to cut? Give us a list, and we'll vote on it.
We spend like it's Christmas all the time. I don't see, all these big things, we say yes to.
Give us a list, and we'll go over each item one at a time. And we'll discuss it with the department head and the rest of the council. Alderman Burton?
How about these mandatory raises everybody gets every year?
There are not mandatory raises. We give the same raises to our non-union people that we negotiated with our union people.
So, who negotiates with the union?
Mayor, the city attorney, and whichever union it is, it would be the police chief or the fire chief, or the head of Public Works with their unions.
And I'd remind, I'd remind the council that the union contracts are actually approved by the city council.
Yes, always. So, you all approve the co-, the contracts that we have in place. And you always do approve the contracts that you, we have in place. Yes, Alderman Frank?
Okay, I'm going to pick one right now. Here's one for the two firefighters for AL, and I understand that, but we just hired one. What if we just did one firefighter at eighty-eight thousand, and plus the training for forty-four hundred dollars, plus the uniforms? Why, what, what if we did one to see, with the, an extra one since the other one was hired? See what that does with the overtime?
We, we have, uh, just replaced a guy, that's what we did. We haven't hired anybody. So, that was just a replacement for Lieutenant Wilcox. So, we have not hired, and we haven't, we've been, our staffing has never really changed from two thousand and eight.
We're running right now.
Excuse me, we're running right now. We've got ten people on one shift and two nines, so, we haven't hired anybody.
Got another one? Alderman Burton?
Now, how about like growth dimensions? What do they do? And, um, Chamber of Commerce, I mean, seriously, it is...
Growth Dimensions created forty-four hundred jobs in the last five years and brought in about seven and a half million dollars last year. And prior to that, over the last four or five-year period of time, they have brought in north of a billion and a half dollars in new business.
How do they do that exactly?
Okay, we negotiated with all the Chrysler suppliers. They are currently, they negotiate, and we bid for opportunities for people who are coming to open new businesses here. So, we attracted all but one of the major Chrysler suppliers. Magna and Yangfeng both doubled the number of their employees that they anticipated. So, we worked, I, I don't understand what your question is. Yes?
Is there any truth to the rumor, maybe, that in two years Chrysler will not be here?
No, there is not. And I, I'll tell you, at this point in time, there is no talk of that at Chrysler at all. Okay? There's always rumors that the plant's going to close. There's been rumors since the sixties that the plant was going to close. With the current economic situation that we have, I think you're going to see production lessen, because the car business as a whole is not in a good place. You will remember, we lost a third shift because of the tariff regulations of this current administration. So, Fiat is an Italian company. They were paying tariffs on materials coming in, on tariffs going out to the hundred countries that we were shipping the Cherokee to. Because of the tariff regulations that got passed, that plant was re, they built a plant in China that's shipping to those hundred countries. So, you know, that, that's about a ten-billion-dollar installation out there. I get phone calls all the time, a rumor from the plant that it's going to close. I call our guy in Washington and see where that is. I will tell you this, confidentially, I am aware of, and I have, I cannot reveal it at this point, they have signed long-term contracts with vendors in our community for services for the plant. So, if they're planning on going in place, they would not have signed a long-term contract with anybody. And Growth Dimensions, if you, uh, Pam comes to us periodically and explains all of the functions. They also pay us rent here at City Hall for the office space they use. They are part and parcel of a community-wide, working with the chamber and working with the businesses in the community, of constantly trying to find better training, so we can have a better workforce. Uh, there's a manufacturer's breakfast tomorrow morning at, uh, the Historical Museum at eight AM. That is our first manufacturer's breakfast. We've got over thirty manufacturers that are coming to that to talk about how we help them solve their workforce problems, their transportation problems. It's an ongoing community effort of many different agencies working together to push the community forward. So, that's what they do, along with the chamber. We have new leadership at the chamber, so, yeah, they're successful. Yes?
I'd really like to hear from Growth Dimensions occasionally.
Well, they do come occasionally.
Not to the city council?
Yes, they have.
I haven't talked to the lady in three years.
No, that's not...
And I chewed on her then, that she didn't come in here.
That's absolutely not true.
When, was Mark Williams, Williamsburg was here? He was in here once a month.
Okay.
The young, whoever's doing it now, I haven't heard from her for a long time.
Okay.
I mean, other than to give some plaques and stuff once, but that's not coming in and saying, "Hey, we've talked to so many people, we're..."
Okay, let me ask you a question, okay? When was the last time you came into City Hall and went to the Growth Dimensions office and asked any questions at all?
Why should I chase them down? It's not my job to chase them down. It's their job to come into here.
She comes quarterly and does a report and hands out materials.
I don't remember it.
No, I can't speak for your memory then, I'm sorry. Anybody else?
As far as I'm concerned, we can take the fifty thousand dollars out and give it to somebody else.
And who will do economic development then?
And who is going to do economic development? Well, I don't see them doing anything. I have yet to have been told they do anything.
Okay. I'm done talking to you about that. Um, yes, sir?
Well, I agree, because I just see now they're like hiring all sorts of people. It's like, I don't know, and what exactly are they doing? So, yeah, I'd propose to cut what, you know, what we give them.
They raise the money to hire their own staff, to provide better services.
Then we can give them less money.
No, that's what we agreed on with the contract with them, so. Okay, Alderman Snow?
I get your point, and I have to agree with Alderman Stevens in the fact, we don't hear from Pam very often. It's been quite a long time. If she comes quarterly, she's skipping some quarters, in my opinion. Be the last time you go through the agendas and find her listed.
Okay, we will, and we'll point it out. This is the first quarter of the year.
And I've attended a number of county board meetings where she does show up on a more regular basis. So, I think we're just looking for update, um, in that regards. I don't, I don't have an issue with Growth Dimensions. Their tool, it's a cost of doing business as a city to have an entity that's going out there recruiting places and doing the stuff that they do. I understand the hiring issue. Unfortunately, I think there's a lot of legwork that goes on that we don't know about, but I can't speak to that. Um, and I get your points about overhead on that expense, um, so. But, you know, again, it's a cost of doing business for the, particularly for the type of city we are, which we are trying to somewhat be a manufacturing city, in the fact that that helps generate a lot of revenue for our city.
If you want Pam to come once a month, she'll come once a month. That's fine. There's no problem with that. I will also reiterate this. I don't see any of you in my office either, coming to talk to me about anything that's on the agenda, calling me about anything that's on the agenda. Marcia comes occasionally and, and visits with me. Mr. Snow and I had a conversation today. Tom and I talk occasionally. George, since he's been trying to sell his house, I don't see him that much. This is where, you know, you can come here more than once a week on Monday night. City Hall's open to you. You're welcome to come in and discuss any topic that you want to discuss. It's not a lack of information. We're all very busy. And if you want to know something, all you have to do is ask. Take an active role. It's just like when you start talking about property maintenance stuff. Hop in your car once a week and do a moonshot tour of your community, in your ward, and help Kara out. We, we respond to reports of problems and issues. Uh, Mr. Stevens has, on occasion, said something about, uh, things that he sees. But we need to all do this on a regular basis. I don't know what the issue is really here, because we have a balanced budget with the proper reserve fund, and we may retain our employees, because we have a good work environment here, and we don't give big raises. We pay the same thing for union and non-union people, and we do four-year contracts, so we don't have to negotiate every year. We do not hire, uh, big-time law, labor firms from Chicago like we used to, with a bill of eighty, a hundred thousand dollars when we negotiate with the unions. We get along fine with our unions. And so, I think we have a good thing here, quite honestly. So, who else? We have some other things on the agenda tonight. Okay, the next thing up is a license and services agreement between Tyler Technologies and the City of Belvedere.
There's a letter before you tonight, as well as a license and service agreement from Tyler Technologies. They're our, um, parent company of our financial software, Incode. This agreement is to move all of our data to the cloud, um, so when we have issues like we had, hopefully, we'd never do again, but when we had it in January, where our servers and our network was compromised, this, it wouldn't affect our business, you know? I mean, Public Works was literally almost shut down for two weeks. I mean, nobody, you know, with all, includes all of our billing for water and sewer and payments, plus all of our city work. It was, it was a nightmare, and I'd like to avoid that as much as possible. So, um, this agreement, it is ten thousand, five hundred dollars a year to move it to the cloud, but because of, we'll be able to get rid of some of the products that we currently have by going to the cloud, so it's going to cost us about fifty-six hundred dollars more a year than we are currently paying. So, I would hope that you would be in favor of us moving that direction and signing the agreement with Tyler Technologies. And I did put this in the budget as of right now, so it is already in there.
Motion to approve by Mr. McGee. May I have a second? Mr. Radcliffe, I believe, beat you to it. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion on the floor? Are not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Done and done. So, next up under F, Attorney Drelle will address this.
Uh, I put this on the agenda, hoping to have an agreement in your packets for the consideration of an intergovernmental agreement with Boone County to host our servers. While the agreement is done and ready to be presented, it was not done in time to make the packets, and rather throw it on your desk last minute, I suggest we just simply remove it from the agenda today. It'll come back to you in two weeks, so you have time to look at the agreement and be informed before we ask you to discuss it.
Next, we have a couple of appointments. Uh, first up is the appointment of Don Banks, Community Building Complex Committee. He has already served on that committee and is willing to continue, and the board over there wants him to continue. So, may I have a motion to approve that appointment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion? Okay, by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Are not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Sounds unanimous. Next is appointment of Natalie Mulholland with Belvedere Planning and Zoning Commission, and I believe Alderman Revelo had some comments to make, as did Alderman Crawford. No, you, you can do it from there.
I'd like to commend her. She's been showing very interest. She ran for alderwoman, she won, and I commend, she wants to still engage in the community in one form or aspect. She wants to serve the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm in support of her. Hopefully, you guys appoint her to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, um, I listened to her when she was, um, put like in a, I don't know, application or whatever, not an application to you, that, but, um, for Alderman. And, um, I talked to her later, and I would have voted for her, and I told her that, but, um, I voted for Daniel Revelo, because, um, he was in the mix already. He was an Alderman, and he had skin in the game. He actually ran a couple of times. So, that's the only reason I didn't vote for her. But I, I surely support her in anything she wants to do.
Something that I, I did not disclose earlier, because I didn't get the letter, but Julie Stapler, who is our county clerk, sent me a letter recommendation, because she's worked extensively with Natalie as an election judge. Natalie also has experience on the county level on their planning and zoning. You all had her resume. Would you, anything you'd like to add?
I really don't want to take up more of anyone's time. You have heard me speak before. Um, I just really have a passion for the city. I raised my family here. I lived here for twenty-five years. Like the mayor said, I've been involved at, um, in the county at that level, but I live in the city, so I'm really interested in what happens in this room, and, um, how you guys run the city, and I'd love to really be a part of planning and zoning. And as a Realtor, I have, I have some skin in the game in that area, and also being on the Planning Commission, um, for Boone County, I do, I am familiar with that. And I really hope that you'll just give me an opportunity and a chance to prove myself.
Alderman Frank?
Well, I like Natalie, too, but I'm just wondering, with her being a Realtor, is that a conflict of interest?
No, it's not.
No, it's not. In the very rare, I can't actually, the only time I ever think that's ever happening is if she was actually a developer with an ownership interest of representing a development firm, coming forward with a subdivision plan. And that's very easy accommodation. She simply recused herself and leave the room for that discussion. Um, it's not like being a member of the city council where you have to worry about interest in contracts and things like that. So, no, I do not see a general conflict of interest. If anyone were to arise, she'd simply recuse herself at my recommendation, I would assume.
I'm just, Wendy, I'm not an investor of any ti, I, we own our own home, and that's it. I don't buy other properties, so there really isn't. I don't have any involvement in any other businesses or anything like that.
Alderman Snow?
And to the best of my knowledge, one of the guys, I think his first name was Ken, he was a Realtor, but...
Yeah, we've had Realtors on the commission before.
Anybody else have questions or comments?
We've had Realtors on the council before.
Yeah, at this point in time. Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve? My motion by Snow, second by Revelo. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So this will go forward to city council for final approval. Um, we've already had our discussion of ordinance 485H, so I don't think we need to revisit that unless somebody else has an additional question. And then, under item J, we have the Belvedere Fire Department Station One remodeling drywall estimates. Chief Heiser?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Belvedere Fire Department, uh, Station Number One upstairs remodeling project is moving right along. Up to this point, the project has been performed by a few of our department members. We have completed the demolition, the reframing, the electrical, the insulation, and the installation of a pulldown attic ladder. We're at the drywall phase right now, 6,000 square feet to be precise of this project. And the area to be drywalled is quite large. Although our guys are pretty talented, they do not feel we can do the job ourselves in a timely and efficient manner. The department has received three quotes from local contractors. It is our members' opinion that we go with the lowest bid from L5 Drywall in the amount of $12,525. The expense will come out of the building repair maintenance line item number 15220610.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crawford, second by Porter. Questions or comments? Snow?
So Al, on the, um, there, looks like there was a two-part proposal from, uh, Sam Burns. Is that a fair assumption, and when you add those two up?
Yes, when you add those two up, it becomes two, $14,992.
And it also looked like he was going to be using Chris to do some of the work. Or did he make, somewhere in the line, it's real hard to read his verbiage here.
Well, the title internal was mentioned there, but not, not his labor.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to the end of the evening, folks. Entertaining the motion to adjourn. Yes, Alderman Freeman?
Did, did I miss, um, item G, the appointment of, um, Mr. Banks?
No, we voted on it.
Oh, we did?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess you did. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.